Good evening, everyone. Six o'clock. We'll call to order the Select Board Short Term Rental Subcommittee Meeting for Thursday, June 20th at 6:00 PM on the dot. Just want to make sure that all our participants from all the groups are here. I see Charity and Matthew.
And Jim. And that's it so far.
And Jim, okay. Okay, so we'll give a few moments.
May I ask a question?
Sure, Charity.
Will we be allowed to read into the record as an opening or closing statement because this is our last meeting?
Well, let's let's see how, let's see how far we get. We have limited time. And I think there'll be a lot of other opportunities for that. Perhaps, so let's the most important thing we need to do tonight before we adjourn is find out where the consensus is on the draft by law so far. So let's, let's, let's do that and then we'll see.
Okay.
I see Stevens on. Is Mr. Maury?
No, not yet.
No, okay. Erica's on it.
Tom, Stephen Maury won't be joining. He's traveling.
Okay, thank you Denise.
Sure.
Town Council's also here. John Giorgio.
And we have Leslie here.
Leslie, Plan Directors here.
Denise, obviously.
And Denise, Fincom Chair. Especially Leslie. Um.
This is
Yes, Stephen.
So I think, you know, I submitted a letter after the last meeting. I suggested that there were nine points of consensus and three or four points of questions. I wonder if you want to maybe use that as a basis to see if we could.
Mr. Giorgio said he wanted to go item by item, element by element, and I think that's a better way to do it.
I
If I may, Tom, if I may, um. So, um, Leslie and I had a good conversation this morning. And, and we agreed on a couple of recommendations to be made to this group. Um. The first recommendation is we take the, what I'm calling the composite STR zoning by law. And as Charity said, we, we go through that basically line by line with the changes that I'm proposing. And hopefully we can hopefully get consensus on that. Um. And then if there's any time remaining, if people want to bring up other issues that have been raised, then certainly that would be up to the chair, but we'll see where we are. In terms of the general bylaw, um. We're recommending that this committee not attempt to get a general bylaw ready for next Wednesday when the Select Board has to sign the warrant. And there are several, several reasons for that. First and foremost, you know, we have pending changes with the Attorney General's Office on Chapter 123, based on the annual town meeting. And to avoid any confusion, we think it's best to put off any general bylaw amendments until the 2025 annual town meeting. There's nothing of particular urgency. And what we really need to do is to make this simple for the September special town meeting. And try to get the zoning article passed as best we can. A lot of the proposals I've seen for amendments to Chapter 123 could in fact be accomplished through the Board of Health Regulations. But I just think it's too much to try to get that done by next Wednesday. So our recommendation would be let's put off the general bylaw until the spring town meeting.
John, just to confirm for, for any members of the public, the pending changes in front of the Attorney General's Office would be Article 60, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's the one that essentially banned corporate ownership and a few other things. So we think yes, that's correct.
Got it. Okay.
And that goes, that goes for any of the petitioned articles to amend the general bylaw. We can, you know, we're going to need some time. We've spent almost no time discussing those and that's going to be a whole other conversation. So that's our recommendation at this point.
Okay, so I would like to go to each group and if they have any comment on public comment from Tuesday. And then we'll go straight to the draft by law as it is in the packet today. I would go to sticking with alphabetical order, Charity and Matthew, if they have any comments on public from public comment or any thoughts quickly. I said we were going to do that, so just want to stick to that.
Well, go ahead Charity.
Yeah, I was just disappointed that there weren't more people willing to express their opinions. And I have to say that the opinions that were expressed seem to not think very highly of what we've been doing.
Matthew? You have anything?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I echo what Charity just said. I was a little surprised. I thought we were going to hear, uh. Yeah, I thought we were going to be two solid hours of, of public comment, but it's interesting. But I did want to make, what Linda Dolph had said about as far as impact on the economy. Um. You know, that I'm just not quite convinced, and this is, you know, maybe more of my own opinion here, that it's going to be a negative impact as far as putting regulations on STRs. I just don't see it, you know, I quoted in the, in town meeting originally, if everybody remembers what I said on the floor of town meeting. Looking at the information or the, the study that was done for the short-term rental work group. You know, when people in 2020, when they came here, they spent more money. When they came, people that owned their houses here came here and spent more money than people that were vacationing here. And so you know, I, I just don't see it. There was less people, but they were spending more money while they were here. So I just don't quite see that. I think there's a lot of data that shows, shows the opposite effect of that, you know? Maybe people will start coming here longer. So I think, you know, I think that can be a little misguided and and right now I think we're seeing a little opposite effect of that, you know, right now we're seeing a lot of STRs on the market that are quite frankly, you know, I think the current, the article in the current this week really hit it on the nose, you know, we're seeing very high rents for these places and I think people are starting to feel priced out and people are starting to go to Europe and other places like that for the same cost. So I just think that's, you know, I think we need to start looking at the big picture here. And so maybe a little regulation will help kind of reel in the market as well. So that's just one thing I want to comment on.
Okay, thanks Matt. Stephen, since Mr. Maury's in here, you're you're
Yeah, I have just two takeaways. I have heard both at that meeting and really consistently throughout this process that most people are pleased that there seems to be a consensus or at least some reasonableness brewing in this process and they're hoping really strongly that the Select Board does put forward an article that can pass to town meeting. And then the second thing that I'm hearing over and over is don't, don't throw out the baby with the bathwater. Don't hurt the locals just to stick it to the investors. Try and find that balance. And I think, and I hope that we're able to do that in our process. Thanks.
Jim or, oh, there you are, Grant. You're here. Good. Jim or Grant?
I'll start Jim, and if you have something to add. So I had a couple of answers to a couple of questions that got asked in public comment. Someone asked if we were using the data that, or if the group had access to the data that the short-term rental work group had access to, and the answer is yes. We're using the data that the short-term rental work group has, has created. I have a big deck of that stuff that we refer to often, so I hope that puts anyone's fears at at ease that we're making stuff up. We're not. We're, we're using the data, we're referring to the data. And then there was another comment from someone that said that the short-term rental work group data indicated that there would be a 5% reduction in the economic impact if we went to nine changes of occupancy. And I talked to Matt Happen, ref of Process First, who is, who, who basically pulled all that data together. And he said that that wasn't necessarily the right interpretation of that data. Basically, what he said was that 5% of the rentals that were done were in the nine and over category, but that doesn't mean that there would be a 5% drop in the economy. What it means is that those extra 5% of renters would might, you know, have rented from someone else if people had only had nine changes of occupancy. And so I don't think anybody needs to really worry too much that, that the market's going to go away if we only have five or nine changes of occupancy. So I hope that helps.
That's interesting. Jim?
Yes, thanks. Just very quickly, I thought I heard at the public comment session and at other times general consensus that people are supporting our efforts at compromise. I heard some people taking exception with numbers on either side. And I'll just go back to the very first statement I made when we started on June 3rd, which was being in the middle doesn't mean we're trying to make everyone happy. It means we're trying to make everyone maybe a bit unhappy. Shared sacrifice so that we can all come together with something that will work. And, and I really hope we'll reach that tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, Erica, if I might ask you to put up John's latest version. Town Council's latest version of the draft bylaw.
Okay.
John, do you want to go through and see?
Yes, I think, I think so. And again, let's get through this composite bylaw first. And then we can go back if time permits to deal with other issues. So the definition of hosted stay is the first change. And this was basically something that Leslie had pointed out at the last minute. We want to make sure that a hosted stay is not necessarily limited to, you know, locate residing in the same dwelling unit. But that it so it would read an overnight stay whereby a short-term renter occupies all or a portion of a dwelling unit, and I've added in located on a lot, okay? Where the owner or operator is present. And they're considered present if the owner or operator is on the lot as opposed to in the dwelling unit itself. So that's the change that I came up with. The are there any questions about that?
I do.
Charity?
I saw another definition that seemed very appropriate for us, which is essentially said that included the, the secondary dwelling. And said, and added that as a factor either in the, in the main dwelling or in another dwelling on the property. And I think it has to be hosted stays have to be hosted by people who are dwelling on the property. And that definition, I think I said it to you, John, but I mean, that definition includes lives and sleeps on the lot. And the lot was highly mentioned. I can send you that if you'd like.
So the, so this, Charity, this makes it clear that the owner or operator is considered to be present on the lot except during the daytime and/or work hours. So that means they have to sleep.
We hope so.
I should have finished that, sleep on the lot. So that was the intent there.
Yeah, I've, I've seen other suggestions to try to get around this, and I think we have to make it very clear that the purpose of this is to protect generally owner-occupied properties that are hosted by someone who is there and that is where they live. And doesn't live three doors down the way or something like that.
Okay, well, let's put a pin in that one and we can, you know, we'll see where we are. Now, the next one.
I have a couple of notes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sure. So, I mean, I don't actually disagree with Charity that it might be better to clarify that we're requiring, you know, habitation or occupation. But I don't feel strongly about it. But I do have two notes, one of which is that there is also a situation where you could have a year-round renter in one of the, on the property that would not be the owner or operator. And I think we want to leave room for that to be the case, or at least consider it. And then I also think we would want to consider whether or not an abutting property would be sufficient because there's a lot of properties that are split up over time where you have, you know, one house on each property and, but the owner lives in one and you know, they're effectively the same thing as living in the cottage, but they are in a different legal lot. So I'd put those, those two concepts out there.
I think in terms of your first comment, Steve, the definition of operator includes the less C. So I think, you know, I think it's, it's clear that if, if, if someone is renting the property year-round, that they would be considered an operator.
Right. I guess, I guess what I'm saying is someone who's not running the STR but happens to rent, but is a year-on tenant in the cottage. I think the, the way I read the operator is if they, if they own the whole, if they're leasing the whole property and, and that tenant is also operating an STR, then they're the operator. But you could have a situation where the cottage is, that, that, without you know, year-round tenant has nothing to do with the STR in the other unit.
So then they wouldn't be an operator. They'd be a tenant.
Right.
What good is that if you're hosting a stay?
I'm sorry?
What good is that? If you're hosting a stay? And the, you know, the, the concept is that the owner is there. And essentially
Yeah.
They're not going on what's going on.
Okay, that, that, that's a good point. I don't think we need to get lost in that. What about the, you know, putting in a budding lot?
Same thing.
Matt? I, I think it's a little late in the game to bring in new concepts. If we had talked about this two weeks ago, I would, I would you know, our, our group has always talked about what if there's a year-round renter on the property and, and, but we never brought it to this because it just made it more complicated and harder to explain at town meeting. So for, for my for my money, I think we ought to table those ideas until the springtime when we can bring them in and add them to the general bylaw. Because I think they make sense.
Yeah.
But we can't debate them today.
Okay.
The simplicity is, is of value.
All right. So if we now go down to, and, and let me let me say that I've had several comments on what we are going to call this regulated short-term rental. So if you go down to the definition of short-term vacation rental, which is just something that I created, I've heard a lot of comment about Ed from Leslie as well, that we really should come up with a name, a term that doesn't include short-term rental, because that's going to be confusing. And there are, as Leslie pointed out, for example, the there are like three or four different definitions using the term apartment and it gets very, very confusing. So I came up with as a suggestion, why don't we call them Nantucket Vacation Rental? I, also Mr. Hurley, he sent me an email suggesting I believe Nantucket Vacation Community Rental. But I do think we should come up with a term that does not include short-term in, in the title.
So I would second Nantucket Vacation Rental.
I would too.
Nantucket Vacation Rental?
I would three. How about that?
Great. So I will make that change throughout. Three, perfect. See? When we talk, we get results. Okay. Now, going through to the substance here, Section 38.
John, John, man, man, make a and ask here, can we go, can we skip for now, the middle section and go to the definitional stuff at the end?
What do you mean the definition?
Well, which, well, excuse me, the ones that then have some more, I, I think we should plow through with the, the kind of terms, if you will, my word, that start at number seven and then come back to where, where your one is here or where short-term rental?
Okay. We could stop whatever you want.
Would you scroll down to number seven, please? So I'm thinking seven, seven through 11 are terms that we were discussing that in, in my thinking, not any of them were, were not that controversial. And maybe we can just sort of plow through these and then come back to
Okay.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question on that, please?
Charity?
We are dealing with definitions of cottage colonies and hosted stays. And anything we decide on this in terms of exemption, I've read a a truly contorted definition of hosted stays and I am very leery of it. So I mean, I think we have to be just relate back, anything we do on cottage colonies and these to make sure that our definitions, we agree on our definitions because
Right.
A, 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 a complete exemption means that those have to be very, very closely defined so that we don't have people wandering in from all over the place trying to get an exemption for a hosted stay by an extraneous definition.
So in that vein, Charity, seven would exempt from the entire Section 38 cottage colonies. Let's, let's just do this in bite-sized pieces. And a cottage colony is defined as a group of four or more detached dwellings legally in existence at the time of adoption of this bylaw located on a single lot which is customarily occupied on a seasonal basis.
Do they have to have a rental history?
No.
By this definition?
Correct.
Do they have to predate zoning?
I'm sorry, they have to, they have to be legally in existence as of the time of adoption of this bylaw. But that does not necessarily mean they have to have a rental history.
Well, I think the way we had phrased it in one other iteration was that it predated, the rationale was that it predated zoning. And that was the justification for that. And I think that was the lever that got Corkish cottages and all of them exempted. And that was sensible. And they have been
And that would keep a lot of people from building cottage colonies between now and to June 1st.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that term is necessary because you couldn't build them now anymore. They're not legal.
Can you explain that, Stephen, please?
What?
Could you please explain that when you say cottage colony, a new one would not be legal? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't think you can get a permit for one now.
And why is that?
You're talking about multiple dwellings on the same lot. It would have to be a transient residential facility. Which I think
I'm going to go to Planning Board Chair Dave Iverson.
Thank you. I, I think what, I think what Stephen's saying is there is no provision in our bylaw presently that would allow that sort of development of a lot. Is that what you're trying to say, Stephen?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that's accurate.
Yeah. With, with, with one caveat, which leads into my comment on this is that I don't think that it should be a wholesale exemption. I think you need to at least make sure that you're not exempting hosted stays and cottage colonies from number eight, which is the prohibited ones. Otherwise, you would be back-dooring apartments, which is not the intention. So I think that the, the exemption needs to be except for as provided in eight.
John?
Oh, um. Okay.
Right. I mean, we don't, we don't want to allow
So they're exempt from the requirements of 38 except for subsection eight?
Right. Because that's a provision that we don't, we don't want to have an exemption to.
Okay.
Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Charity?
For now, yes.
And then we have the concept of hosted stays are also exempt. Presumably, we would have the same except, except for subsection eight?
Yeah.
And Charity, what's your issue with that?
I just think that hosted stays has got to be what it has always been. Which is the owner occupies a dwelling on the lot. And that is the basis for the exemption.
So not
Not somebody who lives next door, not a transient, not a long-term renter. The whole purpose of the hosted stay is that the owner is there to modulate the behavior of the people who are renting and to exempt them from all of the regulations. I think it's incumbent. The owner has to be there. That's the basis. That's the foundation of the whole concept. Otherwise it's useless. And then they get, then there are no guardrails. They can do whatever they want.
So, but I think, I think that's what it says.
Stephen, I'm going to go to Matthew first.
Yeah, I just wanted to give my support with Charity's sake. I also don't want to see this be a backdoor for like arbitrage, Airbnb arbitrage or something like that. Either as well, you know, owners, I'd like to keep owners in there.
Stephen?
I, I think owners and operators covers it.
I think Stephen Maury made a comment when this came up in meetings that that is the true accessory use. Because the owners on the property and the number of days of short-term rental are accessory to the days of residential use.
Dave?
Is Charity's issue with this, the, the operator portion?
Well, I have an issue with that too, but I mean, I think that the whole concept of hosted stays has always been that the owner is on the property.
But I think that's what it says.
It does say that. And I, and I think, and I mean, let's just take for instance, a a lot that has three dwellings on it. So one needs to be occupied year-round. And if, if, if they choose to have that tertiary occupied, occupied year-round by a renter, that could be the operator. I, I don't think we should, that should be a problem for us here. I mean, the idea is to have someone on property that's responsible. I'm not saying a short-term renter. I'm saying a year-round renter on a piece of property in a tertiary dwelling. I, I think is an acceptable option. Thanks.
Well, I disagree, but that's okay. I think there has to be a responsible person who has an ownership issue, ownership role that is supervising the behavior of the tenants.
Jim?
I just want to say, I think Grant and I would agree that owner-operator is, is sufficient. And an operator who is really on the property, really modulating, moderating the behavior of the guest is, is appropriate.
Dave?
Yeah, I, I just think that what, what's important is, is that someone's on the property. And if it's not the owner, the consequences for a, a, a not well-managed STR is going to be the same. Right? Do you want to tell your landlord that you just lost his right to rent because you weren't Right? Do you, you want to tell your landlord that you just lost his right to rent because you weren't? Paying attention? So I, I think that there's. I, I think that there's, there's someone on the property and the consequences for a poorly managed STR are the same. So I, I don't see the damage with having an operator on there. It's just my opinion. I, I don't mean to muddy the conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, um, and, and frankly, the operator is, could most likely be a family member or, you know, whatever, who's not the owner. But lives in the, in the property. There's a lot of scenarios why operator works just as well. It's the, it's the responsible person living there. In fact, whether they own it or not, it's not really the issue. It's, is the responsible person there? Is what I think is the important issue. And I think owner operator. It, you know, that's why John drafted it that way. And I think it's, it's right.
Okay, next one, John. Or Grant?
So that's. I did, I just wanted to quickly mention that, um. You know, this is, this is something that. Again, we could tackle in. Um, in the spring. If, uh, if people felt really strongly that we need to. Um, beef up the definition of. Owner operator and year round rentals on a. On a hosted stay.
And you know something, I agree with that because I think in, in that context, you would have. You would be able to have comment from voters and people who actually do that and would. Be affected by it.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to move on to number eight. This is basically all the ownership. Kinds of units that would be. Short term rentals would be prohibited. Are there any sort of suggestions or concerns?
Yeah, John, I, I have two technical notes on the. Apartments, you, you say, um, issued prior to the effective date, but I think you mean after the effective date. We're talking about new ones.
Yeah, you know, I. Yes, and you know, Stephen, I'm not even sure we need to say that.
Yeah.
For which a building permit has been issued. After the effective date of this bylaw. Because they would not be of, an allowed use at that point. But I, you, you're right. I, it should say, it should say after. The only question is, is. That appendage even necessary?
Yeah, I, I, I think it is because I think where we had sort of compromised on this one was that. Existing apartments wouldn't be restricted, but any new ones would.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, and then sort of on the, on the same, not to get into the minutia, but I would say a building permit. To construct the dwelling units as opposed to like any building permit, which could be like to fix, fix a broken window or, you know, whatever. Change, renovate a bathroom. I don't think that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the actual construction. Um, and then on the first, on the timeshare one. Um, I would have a note that we're exempting. The exemption that's already in one twenty-three, three J. Which was the Melissa Murphy amendment at town meeting.
Right.
So those are consistent.
Does that need to be listed again, John, or is it clearly?
So what are you suggesting? I'm sorry, um, Tom.
The, so we're saying. Timeshares are prohibited in, in, um. Uh, it's, STRs are prohibited in. Timeshares and interal ownership, which is, which is fine. But the exception that was in. One twenty-three, three J from, from town meeting, article sixty. Should be noted there. So it's. Prohibited unless you qualify for that exemption. Just so the zoning code and the.
Yeah, so the only.
Has the AG approved that?
Now, the, uh, thank you, Erica. I hear you.
Language that hasn't been approved by the attorney general.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. I think that would be a cleanup later.
Okay. Those are my notes.
Yeah. Okay, so eight is okay then, right? Just to be clear, I'm going to change it to a building permit to construct a dwelling unit. And I'm going to change prior to after, just a minor little technical change there.
Yeah. Technically, it should be plural because there are by definition plural. Units.
Set, I'm sorry.
But by definition, it's more than one unit. So it would be units.
So could you repeat what you were going to change on here and I'll just make it on the screen so people can see it?
So Erica.
Yeah.
I really would like to, um.
Or do you not want me to do this live?
No, I don't want you to do it live.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
But I just, um, on that note, Erica. Once we get finished today. I am going to. Produce a clean copy of this and I'm going to send it to you. Because you have a. A, um, agenda packet deadline of tomorrow, correct?
Correct, for the, um.
For the select board agenda, that's correct. And also we could put it right into the warrant, which I reviewed today with, but there's a placeholder for this article.
Yep.
And so we all understand this would be sponsored by the. Select board. If they vote it, if they approve it, but we'll find that out next Wednesday. Okay, number nine. Oh, I, I'm sorry, um, Stephen, so it's, it's to just, to construct one or more dwelling units.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Uh, number nine. We really haven't had anybody push back on this, I don't believe. I think I've explained a number of times the benefit of. This is in the general bylaw. I think it should be in the zoning bylaw as well. It really beefs up enforcement options. For plus. Um, and the building commissioner. Unless anybody has a concern or a question, I think that's pretty straightforward.
And John, I believe you've spoken to Leslie, Megan. At all about this recently.
I have.
Thank you.
I have. Okay, any questions on nine?
I'm good with it.
Everyone's good with nine?
Yep.
All right, now, number ten. This is a so-called. Severability clause. Which I think is important. Um, we have it in the general bylaw. And so everybody understands this was, so let's just say for example, um. For example, the AG was to strike, you know, one of the substantive provisions of thirty-eight. The remaining provisions would. Remain in full force and effect. So I, I definitely recommend we have a severability clause.
Everyone good? Thumbs up?
Yep.
And then number eleven, I put this in, I don't know that we actually had a consensus on this at our last meeting. But I believe Steve, if I'm correct, this was something that you suggested.
Yeah, my thinking was to give the town and everybody the most time to deal with it, but then to make sure it was effective before the summer of twenty twenty-five. Next summer.
John, and I believe you also commented that that would give the ti- the AG time to approve.
Yeah.
The bylaw if she so deems.
Yeah, exactly. Are we okay with that date? It also, by the way, would provide notice. To. STR owners and operators. Um, as they proceed through the, um, you know, signing rental contracts.
Yeah.
You know, for the vast majority of those rental contracts, they, they will be subject to this zoning bylaw. So they're going to be limited, for exam, they can reasonably anticipate they're going to be limited in terms of the number of changes in occupancy. Et cetera.
Grant.
Just a question, does that mean that if someone signs, uh, a contract in May or if they sign fifteen contracts in May? They will not be subject to the number of changes of occupancy that we, that, that takes effect in June?
And the date, and the date of those contracts, I agree, I agree, uh, Grant. Can they sign contracts?
I, I. I know John's thinking about it, but I would say that the contracts don't. Subvert the zoning bylaw. So if you, if you enter into a contract that's not compliant with the zoning bylaw, that doesn't make it legal.
Correct.
So. People. People, people entering into contracts this summer should be. Aware of what is likely to be voted on. It, in the fall. And that's what I would caution people.
I just wanted to check.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, charity, charity and then Jim.
Um, I just want to. From my experience, limited as it is. The attorney general will probably act on this within six months. Is that not correct? If, if something should be passed at town meeting?
I think that's a reasonable anticipation. Uh, charity, so they have ninety days to approve. A bylaw. Um, but there's a process where they can request of town council, actually, which I would never grant without talking to the town. Of two additional ninety day periods. Um, so. That actually is more than six months, correct? That's nine months, but. You know, the reality is, I think. Having. Making sure there's at least six months for the attorney general to review. This is probably a reasonable. Uh, eh, uh, expectation.
I just, I'm just wondering whether, you know, as, as Grant suggested. I mean, are all, if somebody tries to start. Writing contracts.
Right. So maybe.
The new rules or the old rules?
Maybe we should add to this sentence. A comma after July first, twenty twenty-five. But shall apply to any contracts. Executed. For, for rental periods. After Ju- June first of twenty twenty-five, something like that.
Jim.
Uh, yes, I was, I was just going to say something exactly like that, John, that. I think if we don't put in a provision like that, that we will confuse renters who might think, oh, good, I'm going to get all my contracts now before this goes into effect. And I think it would be better either to put in a provision like that or to maybe move the date forward to. You know, March first or something. Um, I think we wanted to send out a clear signal that these will be the new rules moving forward for the next rental season.
Yeah, I, and I want to check chapter sixty-four G because I believe that in the state law. That there was something. Like this that was put in, but I won't waste your time now. I'll double check on that, but something to the effect, um. But shall apply to any re- rental contracts. Entered into.
Why, why would we do what everybody else does upon approval of the, uh, attorney general? I mean, why? Isn't that what everybody else does?
No, because technically the, uh, see technically the bylaw. Oh, that's not right. Um, you can have a later effective date. If it's, if, i- if this were silent. If, if. Paragraph eleven was not included. This bylaw would take effect. On the date that it's enacted at town meeting. Subject to a, you know. Ultimate approval by the attorney.
That's right, I forgot that.
But I don't know that that's what you all wanted to do.
Oh, sorry, I. Uh, charity asked the exact question I was going to ask. Um, yeah, so I bet you, we got the answer. I'll lower my hand.
John, I know this is different, but when we pass the three percent on professional managed units and then we. Pushed back the filing date and all that.
Yes.
We heard, we heard from a lot of people that that was going to be a problem, so. I'm just thinking. Process wise, that the. Whatever the date is, June first or otherwise, twenty twenty-five, uh, or otherwise is smart because. Like, like you or somebody else said before, it gives, it gives people a lot of notice to know what is going to happen.
So can I? Can I ask a question of the? Real estate. Folks. On this call. What is, uh, is it common? For people to actually sign rental contracts? This summer for next year? Suppose I come down and I.
It is, John.
It is, I know.
So I rent the third week in August. I want to sign up.
They want to grab.
Actually sign the contract for next year.
It is common, yeah.
Uh, just a process, Marion has her hand up. Um, we're not taking public comment tonight. Um, appreciate the, uh, wanting to participate, but tonight is just going to, we're going to be drilling down on these provisions. Thank you.
I think she raised her hand because she's a realtor.
Got it. Thank you.
Is there a way that you could just say that essentially? Any contracts written. For periods subsequent to. June first will be bound by. The. Uh, regulations. Of this article. And that. That's it. They, I mean, they can make all of their, their reservations and so forth, but they can't really.
Sign the contract.
Get around, get around the provisions that will take effect.
Yeah, uh, John, the language you said before, I think probably does that. And I don't have any objection to closing that loophole. It's not my intent. I don't actually think it is a loophole, so I don't have any problem with clarifying the issue. Because I don't think the contracts subvert. Zoning. Or supersede zoning.
Yeah.
Okay, everyone feel. Decently about that as a placeholder for John to, um. Possibly add an additional sentence. And for us to move on to another provision.
Yeah.
Good charity, Matthew, good?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you, John. Do you want to return to where you were?
Thank you.
Or I, uh, interject.
That's fine. Okay, I'll, I'll work on that language and. You know, we could, i- if there is a problem, we can deal with it next week. Okay.
Do you have something real quick?
Yeah, just a quick, uh, technical question. John, are the definitions, um. Are they the same as like a general bylaw? Is it only a, a majority vote or is it a two thirds for definitions?
What, you mean to amend a definition on the floor of town meeting?
Yeah, if we ever wanted to amend it, like the owner and the operator, that kind of stuff. To amend it.
Uh, no, no, this is in the zoning bylaw, so any amendment.
So it is, okay, yeah, that's.
At a future town meeting, any amendment would be a two thirds vote. As it is with any zoning bylaw. Okay?
Reason to get it really tight.
Yep. Okay, going back now to. Number one. So the way I've changed this based upon the discussion. Is, oh, I'm sorry, before I do that. Never mind, no, we already took care of that. So number one will now say, no person or other legal entity shall engage in a short term. Vacation rental use as an owner or operator on more than one lot. Provided however. If a lot has more than one dwelling unit, a primary dwelling and a secondary dwelling. May be rented as a short term rental vacation separately.
John, are you using short term vacation rental or?
Yeah, you know what, I'm just going to use that because that's in front of me on the page.
Okay.
But I will be changing all of those references to, what did we decide?
Man bucket vacation rental.
Yes, I will make that change, uh. Wherever it feels, yeah, appears. So what do we think about number one?
I'll go first. I think it's unfair. That somebody with a primary and a secondary dwelling will be able to, although it is not specifically stated here. But it's implied. That they will be able to rent.
Both units.
Both units. And. The abutter who has one dwelling. Uh, will only be able to rent. One.
But he only, but that a butter only has one.
Well, I know, I agree that, I agree with that, but. In another article, there has been, uh, a differentiation saying that one at a time. And then another issue has come up. Farther down in the. Uh, and Matt brought this up, uh. What about the, uh? what about the, uh, changes of occupancy? Does that apply to both dwelling units or is it to the lot? So I just wanna raise that, but I think that that is, um, it's unfair and it's going to cause some controversy.
So, um,
Steven?
I, I don't, I don't actually understand why it's unfair that someone who has two dwellings can rent two and someone who has one can rent one. If some, someone has one and they wanna rent, build another, build another. Um, uh, when we originally started this, m- my proposal was to allow people to have two, uh, licenses and, uh, or two different, to be able to rent two properties. And I think it was Grant and Jim who sort of agreed with that number, but were really pushing that it should be not only two, but on the same property. And I conceded on that, that the, you know, there was some value to that. So, um, I, I think that what John has here um, makes sense, but I would change, instead of same primary and secondary, I would just say, uh, you know, legal dwelling in it or, or some dwelling unit where it's not prohibit, prohibited, because not all STRs are, are gonna be in primary and secondary. Those are defined terms. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't use those terms here. I would just say dwelling units in which STRs are allowed or are not prohibited.
Well, but Stephen, would you agree with me that if there's a one dwelling unit on a lot, it's the primary dwelling?
Yeah, but if.
And if, if there were two dwelling units on a lot, one's primary and one's secondary, right? You can't have, you can't have two primary dwelling units on the same lot.
No, no, of course, but you could, but if you have a, um, duplex, then there's not necessarily a primary and secondary. Those are, that's a different term uh, under our bylaw. And if you have an apartment that is not gonna fall under, that's existing, that doesn't fall under our prohibition on eight, there's not a primary and a secondary. So because those are defined terms, I would, I would suggest just saying dwelling units either in which it's allowed or which it's not prohibited. I don't really care which way, but uh, I'm, I'm hesitant to use a defined term that would exclude things that we're not actually trying to exclude in this section.
I'm gonna go to Grant, why John's thinking?
Um, I, I, I don't have a problem with the secondary and primary dwelling units being rented separately. Simply because in the process of creating our article and then also in talking with other people um, in this process, it's come to our attention that there are a number of people that sort of fall into this category of having a primary and a secondary and, and they rely on being able to rent to a large uh, family, you know, extended family, if, if they can take both dwelling units on one contract, but often it's one, it's often two contracts for primary and secondary and and that's not a bad thing necessarily, because both of those rental parties tend to be more, you know, better behaved when there are people on the same lot with them. Um, they don't wanna necessarily get into fights with their neighbor. So, um, it, I think it makes sense. I, Charity brings up a good point, and that is are we saying that the primary and secondary each get a change in, a change of occupancy that we define? Or do, do both the primary and secondary dwelling have to share those changes of an occupancy? Because.
I would, I would say, Grant. I would say, Grant, no, because the, um, change in occupancy, uh, is defined by um, the dwelling unit, not the lot. Okay?
Okay.
Stephen, in your example, if it's a duplex.
Yeah.
They're both located on one lot. So they could both be rented under this bylaw.
Yeah, my, 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 my concern is that when you use terms that are defined in our zoning code that have a specific meaning, you are now excluding other, um, dwelling unit types.
But remember, this is just an exception. And the exception is if there's more than one dwelling unit, then you have a primary and a secondary dwelling may be rented. But that exception doesn't apply if you're renting two, uh, halves of a, of a, of a duplex. Cause they're on the same lot.
Well, a primary and a secondary on the same lot too. But so what if you, if you had an apartment that has, you know, four units and doesn't fall under the prohibition and eight? There's no primer.
No, but, but they, it, all of those four units are located on the same lot.
Correct.
So they're allowed. That's why when I had originally drafted this, I had referred, you know, I had used the concept of a dwelling unit rather than the lot.
I'm gonna go, Jim?
Yeah.
I'd like to suggest a possible compromise on this, um. I agree with Grant. We've talked to a number of Realtors who said there are people who have a primary and secondary dwelling and they've relied on the income from both. I don't think we wanna hurt those people who've set up their finances that way. On the other hand, I've heard from some people who are saying, well, this will encourage people to build a, a, a secondary dwelling on a lot so they can short term rent it. And I think that's something we do want to avoid. Some, uh, the possible compromise I'm suggesting is, um, something along these lines, John. Uh, we're in the middle of it where it says, provided, however, if a lot has more than one dwelling unit as of the time of the adoption of this article. In other words, only, only those, um, properties or lots that have more than one dwelling unit as of the time of the adoption of this article would be allowed to have this, this provision. And it seems to me that might protect against future lots having, uh, secondary dwellings built just for STRs while also protecting the rental history of those who have relied on both being rented.
Uh, Jim, I, I appreciate the thought, but I don't, I don't agree with that. I think it creates a different class uh, of, of people, and it also, uh, encourages if you have, uh, it, you know, w- w- we, one of the things we've talked about trying to avoid is these large, you know, wedding bashes where you've got fifteen people staying at, at the property. If you allow for properties to be rented separately, you can have two small families staying there. If you require them to be rented together, you're necessarily ha- having large, large groups of people.
Steve, I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to say that. Maybe I, I didn't express myself clearly. Uh, what I was saying was that only the properties that already have two dwelling units would be allowed to rent them separately or together, whatever, probably separately. Um, but in the future, let's say in my house, I have one, one dwelling unit, I would not be allowed to build a secondary dwelling and then STR it if that was after the adoption of this article. So only the ones that already exist would be allowed to rent the two different dwellings. In other words, the idea would be to try to, uh, deter people from building a secondary dwelling only for STR uses. And I think that's a valuable community that, uh, you know, goal to have.
Yeah, I, I, I get what you're saying, but I think that that creates two different classes and a complication that, that isn't, isn't fair to people, uh, you know, who are, who are coming later. Um, and i- it's also gonna be remarkably complicated to keep track of, uh, you know, when was everything built?
That's all, that's all recorded.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't, I, I don't, I don't, I don't love that idea. I think it should be either you can do it or you can't, but trying to create two classes in that particular situation, I don't like.
Matthew?
Yeah, I'm just confused on Stephen's argument there, just cause, uh, I mean, how many people are gonna buy up three or four townhouses and then try to rent them all out on the same lot? I mean, is that kind of what you're getting at?
You, you're talking about what I was saying to John Giorgio?
Yeah.
No, I, well, if you, if you have an, you, if you have an apartment on, uh, the same lot, you could have three or four different owners that all live on that lot. Um, but, but they would not be allowed to rent them separately under this definition potentially, because only primary and secondary dwellings could be rented separately. It, you know, I just think that using those terms could potentially cause a problem, but, um, I, I, I think, I, I, I think Jim's ideas may be bringing up something pretty what, that I would consider to be controversial, a little late in the game. It's not, uh, it's not really something we've talked about.
Charity?
Well, I like Jim's idea, um, and I think we have to go back to the original intent of secondary dwellings, which is articulated in great detail in the zoning by law. And that was to provide a means of income for retirees and people who lived in their primary dwelling to be able to rent, and it was specifically stated, as I recall it, uh, to year, year round for, um, you know, cover some expenses. It was never, ever intended to be a way to monetize ownership of property on Nantucket.
Yeah, I, I think the idea that someone is gonna build a second dwelling just to rent it out is, doesn't take into account the thousand dollars a square foot it costs to build a house these days. I just like, it doesn't make any sense. Um, I, I, I think you're gonna lose people on that, and I don't know that it really goes to the core of what we are trying to do here. And again, maybe, maybe it's something we do in a round two.
How's everyone feel about that, about leaving it as is for now and possibly there being further changes at a subsequent town meeting?
Well, from my standpoint, I'm not in favor of it being, uh, there's a certain element of this that I think is highly beneficial to somebody who already has a secondary dwelling, uh, and gives them uh, an edge over people who may be deciding to build a secondary dwelling and are, you know, probably unlikely to be able to do it, but I do like Jim's, Jim's suggestion.
Jim?
So, so Tom threw you to Stephen. Stephen, um, this is an attempt at a compromise. I think there are many, many people who think we should only be allowed to rent one, one dwelling unit on a lot, not two. Um, and I think Charity probably is feeling in that direction, but I believe that this compromise may allow Charity to feel that some of her fears have been put to rest in terms of people building secondary dwellings just to STR them. Um, I see it, I'm not trying to say you have to agree with me, Stephen. I understand you, you have, you're a good mind that, that will think it through. But I think it may be a compromise that could allow all three of us to support this, to allow the existing lots with more than one dwelling unit to rent both separately, as, as John Giorgio explained, while protecting against the future in a way that would bring Charity aboard. So I'd like to, to just sort of, uh, uh, encourage you, implore you to think about that. Maybe, maybe this is worth doing if we can all move together in a unified way.
I, I hear you, Jim. Um, I'm thinking about it.
Grant?
Yeah, I just wanna echo what Jim said. I think it's a good compromise and, um, it, uh, it doesn't change the intent of number one. It just makes it a little easier for everyone to get behind. And I, you know, I'm just worried about somebody standing up at town meeting and saying, now everybody's gonna build a second dwelling. And then the whole thing crashes to a, to a halt. So, you know, adding that provision that, you know, as long as it's built before the passage of this article just makes, makes it a little bit more watertight.
Charity?
I do think that it, it will help protect the integrity of residential neighborhoods.
Okay, well.
All right. I mean, I don't think we need to talk about it anymore. We couldn't, we couldn't.
So I, so I'm going to add after one dwelling unit on the effective date of this bylaw.
And what, what about the rest of it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I, I'm sorry, I just had a little freeze there. So, um, if a lot has more than one dwelling unit on the effective date of this bylaw, a primary dwelling and a secondary dwelling may be rented as a short term rental vacation separately.
Yeah. Um, John, I think typically that would be tied to like a building permit as opposed to construction, but you can deal with that.
How about in existence on the effective date of this bylaw?
I think that just, then the question, you're like, if it's, if it's in the middle of construction, does it count? You know, I, I, I think generally zoning goes with the issuance of the building permit because it's a fixed governmental record as opposed to trying to figure out where they are in the process.
If, if I might ask Jim and Grant a question, thinking back to the short term amount of work group time, wh- wh- is the compromise that you're suggesting would say something like until the the use is abandoned or the property is sold or something like that? Do you remember, Jim, we had something in there like that? I- is that how this would work?
Well, you mean to, to, to lose the right, um, I think I think that would go along with all the other provisions that may or may not be allowed.
I, I, I think we're getting really heavy handed here. We're saying you can have a, you can rent primary and secondary separately, but now we're saying, but only if they're existing, and then we're gonna say, but not the next owner, like.
Yeah, I don't recommend that either. Okay, let's not then. Um, okay, could we use certificate of occupancy? John, does that work or is building permit better? I, I have no idea. I'm sure Stephen knows this better than I do, but maybe a certificate of occupancy.
So what I have here is for which a building permit for a new dwelling has been issued on the effective date of this bylaw.
If that works, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, I don't agree with the provision, but that's standard, you know, zoning language.
Okay, um, now, number two, um, so the, the way I have revised, revised this is if an owner or operator who previously engaged in more than one short term rental use on more than one lot, and then I'm gonna take out on the same lot. It's, so, so it'll read, if an owner or operator who previously engaged in more than one short term rental use on more than one lot, prior to the effective date of this bylaw, they may continue to do so for a period of five years.
So how does everyone feel about this? I'll start with, with Charity and Matt.
I would not, I, you know, I would just simply not like to see this any more than three years. I've said that, I've said that over and over again.
Grant or Jim, or Stephen, excuse me?
Um, I, I don't agree with the sunset provision. I think people made major financial decisions. I think people uh, should be allowed to keep what they had going into this. Um, frankly, I think the Jim's compromise, uh, on the last one is, is better than the sunset here. Um, I, I just think taking away a right that people have is gonna impact a lot of locals. You're gonna see people who say, you know, I inherited this from my family. We're trying to keep the properties in the family. We, we made a major investment so that we could make, uh, some passive income, so that we could make our life work on Nantucket. And now you're sticking it to us with, there's no benefit, uh, to do that for people who are already in the system to, you know, but there is, but there's a huge impact on them. I think that we have a lot in here that helps deter investor focused STRs and helps preserve neighborhoods. And I think that making it hard on a very small number, making it extremely hard on an extremely small number of people is very unfair. You know, we, the number of people who would exceed that, maybe it's fifty or a hundred, but it's crushing. And I just don't see the benefit.
So you would, so you would take out?
I would take out the sunset.
I disagree.
Yeah, I disagree strongly, um, that we should take the sunset out. Uh, I'm sorry, Matt, I jumped in front of you.
Matt, you wanna go or not? Grant can go?
Yeah, uh, I, you know, I'm on the same page as, as Grant and Charity. I, I disagree strongly as well, and I, I'd be, you know, I would like to see three as well, because, you know, we kind of pointed out in our last face to face meeting that you know, the loophole here is, you know, you put it in a family member's name or something, your spouse's. And, and so there's, there, we kind of pointed out the workaround a little bit here. And so, uh, people that are gonna be motivated to keep these are, are gonna use that, and they're gonna put it in a family member's name or sons or daughters or spouses or something like that. Um, so i- it's, I, I, you know, I don't think a three year.
a three year sunset is uh is plenty of time to transfer property.
I I think a rule that encourages people to just have, go to their lawyer and do some paperwork uh is not, is not a good rule, like, but, you know, what point, what point is that? None of the lawyers here need uh extra work trying to get around rules. But if we're gonna have this rule, I think that five years is is more, you know, I know the the original proposal was ten years. So, you know, I think five would be more reasonable than three.
Okay, so I I think I'm hearing that charity and and Matt think it should be three, but like the provision generally, Grant and Jim are in favor and Stephen is against it. So I think we have sort mostly two thirds uh of the group's agreement on that. Um, and I think the the select board can take that into account when we potentially add this article to the warrant. Jim?
Um, I think it would be better if we try to nail down a number tonight, so the select board doesn't have to try to deal with it. And and I I sympathize with what Stephen's saying. I understand what he's saying. I sympathize with what charity's saying. I would suggest, again, in the interest of compromise, if we can all stay together, that we go to five years. And I know it's not what charity wants and what Matt wants. I know it's definitely not what Stephen wants, but Grant, do you agree that that would be an okay for us anyway, an okay compromise to go to five years?
What about four?
I well, hold on, hold on a second, because the, you know, Stephen's at unlimited, you're at three. So the compromise is somewhere between unlimited and three. And if if we're taking into consideration people's lives, right, and we're taking into consideration the lives that people lead and and the big expenses in people's lives, especially in families, maybe the compromise is eight years because that would do and that would get, you know, three kids through college if if we did eight years. We were originally at ten years and um for me, I, you know, this, this is just to make it possible for someone to have a little time to make make themselves, get their houses in order, so to speak. So, um, that's, that's where I'm at and, you know.
So with the idea that compromise always means accepting things you don't like, it sounds, you know, the most reasonable.
I think four sounds good. Is there a prohibition then? It's obvious that uh no further STRs, uh no more than, in other words, what, I mean, what's going to prevent somebody, whatever we come in on the floor, say, we wanna, we wanna extend this to.
Charity, excuse me, one second. Erica, would you mute? Um, uh, Kevin, Kevin Stutz, I see your hands up. We're not doing public comment tonight. Um, thank you for offering though. Um, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then in the future, how how are we going to monitor this, manage it and prevent further multiple ownerships of STRs on more than one lot?
Well, I I think the registration system would have to be designed to account for that.
Correct.
I I still think that's excessive and would have to decline support.
So I'm hearing two reluctant two thirds support for eight years to at least send it to the select board as a placeholder. Is that?
Uh, I think that's right. I think that's right.
Okay.
I mean, none of us are gonna, all of us are gonna have some parts of this that we don't like. So.
True.
John?
Yes, sir.
Number three.
Well, just hold on one second. I'm gonna change five to eight, correct?
Mm hmm.
All right, number three. In the grand spirit of compromise, is it six or seven or is it three to four?
Charity or Matt?
I go with six and three.
Agreed, six and three.
You said, I'm sorry, Matt and Charity say six or three. I mean, six and three.
Six and three.
Yeah.
And and I think you have to make this very clear. Okay, as long as it, so it's three year, three for three, essentially. If you buy a new property, you have three changes of occupancy for the first three years. Right? That's the way that reads?
Yeah.
That's what I
Yeah, that's what it says.
That's what I would, I would urge. And six.
That my turn, Tom?
Yeah.
Uh, so I feel very, very strongly. I originally proposed nine. The short term working group proposed nine. I I think the the compromise number should be eight. Uh, and eight essentially is weekly is one, one a week, right? Nearly every summer in that period has eight weeks in that period. Sometimes it's nine weeks. And I think that allowing people who are in the system um who do this to have, you know, essentially weekly turnovers is how people vacation. It's how people uh, you know, rent their homes and cutting that to six is 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 very punitive against the people that we're not trying to be punitive against. Um, that said, I highly agree that new people into the system should have essentially half that. And I think the number should be four. So I would go with, I would propose eight and four.
Grant?
Uh, uh, you know, we were at six and three and I hear what Stephen's saying and and um, you know, we as a group, we've talked about this a lot and um, everybody has uh, everybody in our group has an opinion. Um, I think most of us would would be willing to go to seven. But if we were to go to eight, we would need that, that, that number for new contracts, new people to go to two. Um, because really that's the most important thing. If we, I would, I would do, I would do eight and two. Um, just so that we can make sure that anyone who is thinking about pooling a bunch of investor money and buying a house on Nantucket to to make it a, an investor short term rental, that their investors would say, I'm out, I'm going to the vineyard, you know, that kind of thing. Um, the three is good, but um, and obviously someone can, someone can suggest changes on town meeting floor and and the select board probably has some thoughts on these numbers too, but, you know, I'm fine with six and three. If we're gonna comp six, then we really need the the number for new people to go down.
Charity?
I do not want to see it. We, we when this was brought up, we compromised because um we had eight in our article, we have eight changes in occupancy per calendar year. Period. And we cannot agree to this um unless you want to go ahead and uh establish uh changes of occupancy limits in the shoulder season. But I I'm fine with the uh I I think if uh you wanted to go to two changes in occupancy in July and August for the first three years for newbies, you know, I can, I can certainly support that, but I cannot slide back up to eight and nine when people have already made a compromise down to six and seven and this whole thing just seems like it's contrived. Sorry to say that, but that's the way it is. Thank you.
Charity, I would just say we're, we're trying to find what can get two thirds here at at minimum. So that this, this is a process and I I understand it is difficult for everyone to compromise, but that's what we're trying to do here. Jim?
Yeah, obviously, the numbers are are really tough to figure out, but I think hearing all the different viewpoints, I believe, I do believe that if we go to seven and three for three for three years, seven for existing, I think that we could I hope we could all agree to that. I know we're all giving up something in different directions, but and I think it's something that could pass. So I I'd like to propose this compromise as seven for existing, three for three years for for newly uh newly purchased. And also, I would want the three years to start, we can talk about this later, but with the, with the license, with the STR license, not with the ownership. But I want to propose seven and three and see if there's any way that we can all get behind this and stay unified.
Grant?
Um, yeah, I like the way um Jim thinks. And um, I think seven and three makes a lot of sense and it doesn't require that we compromise on the three part of it. Um, simply because uh our realtor friends tell us that seven is the average number of changes of occupancy that um that they're seeing in contracts, or at least that's what we heard from the short term rental work group. So I would, I would, I'd be fine on seven and three and, you know, Tom, I I think you're not gonna get a unanimous set of numbers here. Um, but I hope that we've given you enough guidance that the short, that the select board can settle on something that makes sense.
Stephen?
Yeah, so I was at, I started at nine and five, came down to eight to four. I I I think that's it, it's, it's as important to ensure enough weeks for the people who are part of our community as it is to limit the weeks to the new people. And maybe the compromise is eight and three.
Charity and then Grant?
When we first started doing this, we gave up on we came around to no minimum number of nights. Uh, and the whole purpose of our article was to force the owner into the position of being the decision maker on the contracts they are offered. And it's up to them to decide how many, which contracts they want to accept. And that's why I thought, you know, and I still do, um. Let them be the ones who are going to be reaching out to get longer contracts so that we don't have to set minimum night stays. That was the conversation we had. And I'm sticking to it.
Yeah, I have another compromise idea here and, you know, I, I as much as I enjoy agreeing with Mr. Cohen, I'm disagreeing with him here. I don't think we need to make provisions for new people in this marketplace. I think we need to hold the line against investor short term rentals. And so, you know, if we're gonna compromise to seven, maybe we go instead of three for three years, if we're gonna go to seven or even eight, maybe we go to three for five years. And that way, the investors will stay out.
So, Grant, I I think that's, that's a decent idea. Um, what about eight and three for four years?
Grant? Then Jim?
Yeah, I, you, yeah, I think eight and three for four years is almost as good as five years.
Yeah, uh frankly, I'm not sure the fifth year is a material difference. I, and and adding time to, to, to the, you know, slow to the, to the prohibition makes it even more unattractive as an investment. So, I'm not I'm not opposed to that concept, but I think we should try to, you know, sort of protect our poor people uh with the idea, you know, once a week, weekly turnovers in the summer, but new people get less. And so eight and three for five, that might work.
Jim?
I like Grant's idea. I think the only way I could agree to going up to eight would be to put more limits on the new ownership and I think three contracts for five years is is a really uh good solution and um a good suggestion. And I'm hoping that charity will see that there is some value in that you know, to charity.
Charity?
I like the three and the five. I think we can um certainly consider the eight. But there again, um yeah, three, three turnovers for five years. And I think in the long run, that would be a strong disincentive to investment.
Stephen?
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the whole point of that is to act as a disincentive investment, but at the same time, I don't, what I don't want to do is make it impossible for um what's a really nice part of our community, which is sort of the the upper middle class people who use it half and rent it half and 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 really like can't, you know, and are not wealthy. They're not so wealthy that it doesn't matter, right? We, we, the, the, the people who actually need to rent it to to be able to do it are a good part of our community. It's an extremely common part of our community. And I want them to have enough weeks that that it, that there's some value there. But if they have to do it for longer, that's probably okay. That's something they can plan with. Um, and and sort of like, and five years has got to be a poison pill for an investor.
Okay, so I'm hearing three years, this is, excuse me, three changes of occupancy for five years and then eight after that amount of ownership.
Yeah.
As the proposal. So I'd like to just kind of go through the, to the groups and see if everyone Charity, I I know you and Matt are are prob, are not in theory on the larger picture, but in the purposes of this discussion, that is acceptable to you?
I'd like to hear from Matt.
Matt?
Yeah, I, I like seven, but, you know, in the spirit of compromise, I mean, it's one thing, I I like what Jim said, though. I would want to see this from the date of the registration, not a date of ownership or data of building permit or anything like that. Um, so it had to be date of uh STR registration. But I'd also like to see, kind of see what we're just talking about too, maybe some sort of hardship provision or something, you know, if we have a local community that came under or a local community member that came under some sort of hardship and they needed to STR in the summertime. You know, and they haven't registered their home ever as an STR. Uh, but, you know, they, they move out and they only have one, one primary and that's it. They don't have a secondary to move into or something. Um, so I just wanted to make sure somebody like that would be protected.
That would require a, a special permit process or something.
Yeah, which is something that certainly um plus does not recommend, and I don't recommend it either. I think that's a backdoor opening that could really split this whole thing apart.
Yeah, so I I I don't think that we should do it based on when you start short term renting for a couple of reasons. One is, we don't actually want to create an artificial incentive for people to short term rent just to start that clock. Uh, and secondly, um, a lot of people who short term rents don't do it. Um, you know, have owned their property for a long time before they do it. And I don't, I I don't think, you know, if like, if I own my home for twenty years and then I want to retire to, you know, get it somewhere warmer, I shouldn't have to then start in the, in the long category. Or if I inherit my parents' house, I shouldn't have to start in that category. Or if I have to go to, you know, a nursing home off island or something, I shouldn't have to start in that category. I think the if someone's owned their home for five years, they should have met that, our community involved, uh, you know, commitment at that, that point. Um, without having an artificial uh incentive to STR to start that clock.
Grant?
Yeah, I think that just opens up a massive loophole that you can drive a truck through. You know, this the largest growing number of houses on the market right now are between one point five and three million dollars. And if you just look at the low end of that, that's at today's interest rates, that's a mortgage, a mortgage rate of about ninety eight hundred dollars a month. And so that's a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year. Hundred fifteen thousand dollars a year in their mortgage and and there's no way that a short term rental is going to cover that cost. So, you know, what we're trying to do is keep these investors out of this market and hopefully um there will be another class of house on the market that drops down below what we see right now, so that middle class people can take advantage of it, because right now, middle class, class people can't buy into this market. What we see right now so that middle class people can take advantage of it because right now middle class class people can't buy into this market.
Charity and then Steven.
I just want to make sure I understand this uh provided bit. Provided, however, that an owner who purchases a dwelling unit or a lot. And builds a dwelling unit. After the effective date of this by law may only engage in a short term vacation rental. With no more than three changes in occupancy. In July and August for the first three years.
Five years.
Uh, excuse me, for the first five years. Now, does that mean that they can short term rent in the shoulder season?
Yes.
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 Who is it we're supposed to be? Where did you suggest there was a loophole?
Yeah, Grant, I didn't really follow. What the loophole.
Oh, the loophole is um is if you get. Uh, it it can take up to three years to build a house. And so somebody. Buys a lot. They they own it for three years, then they tear the, they tear the house down and they start building it. Um, there's your five years right now, right there. But if we say it's five years from the beginning, five years of uh S short term rental or. Nantucket vacation rental operation or use, then um we're closing that loophole up. You know, my biggest fear is that investors are going to look at houses on the market right now that need fixing up and they're just going to. Bulldoze them and build beautiful vacation homes.
Steven.
Well, I mean, frankly, they're doing that anyway, but if we're telling people you have to wait five years, I don't think it matters whether or not there's. Construction during that period or not, they they still have, you know. Uh, I I I'm I'm really, really strongly against the concept of moving towards five years of short term rental. And applying that to people who have already owned the property for five years. If you've already owned the property for five years. Or if you are and haven't inherited that property or it's an interfamily gift. You know, those are the people we're not trying to interfere with. Um, this is a dr- a drastic change. We, oh, I think we're only talking about people who are new buyers. Uh, that's what, you know, like, there's no investor who already has five years of ownership.
Jim.
But that's to start from the uh the use of the property for a short term rental. It shouldn't start when they get a building permit.
It it should start from when they own it. That's the whole point. You have to make a community investment for five years before you move to the second category. And if you want to own it for five years and not short term rent at all, that should be fine. We want to, we don't want to artificially encourage people to short term rent. Or if I want to retire in five years from now, I shouldn't have the short term rent. Now so that I qualify five years from now, or if I'm going to get sick five years from now, I shouldn't have to. Start to start, you know, guessing when I'm going to get sick. Uh, you know, or when my parents are going to die or like it just doesn't make any sense to me to artificially. Encourage short term rentals to get people to the second category. When what we're really trying to do is say we want that second category for people who have been a part of our community, which is based on ownership for five years. I thought we had this conversation all right.
Jim.
Yeah, I I have been a strong proponent of it should start with the registration of the S T R, but. However, I'm listening carefully to what Steven says and I think he's been listening carefully to us and has made some compromises. Um, and I and I do believe that five years is probably enough, even if we go with ownership, I think it will be easier to uh. To monitor. I think we've come up with a really, really good solution here of eight years for people who are existing S T Rs. Eight, eight contracts for those people and only three contracts in high season for five years for new people. I think that's good enough. I think it will really, really deter investors and um I would um. Suggest a compromise in Steven's um direction on this one particular provision, even though I didn't come in believing that.
Grant, are you okay with, are you okay with your colleagues' comments and then I'll go to charity?
Um, I'll wait until after charity talks, but I do have something different to add.
Yeah.
I think it should be, you know. From the time they register. That they want to. Short term rent, they start, that starts the clock. And so if. Um. You have somebody who. Uh, you know, just comes in. And then decides, well, we don't, we don't, you know, this isn't what we expected. Let's just rent the house and. And if they've been here five years, does that mean they start immediately? With eight?
Uh, yeah, uh, if that's a question, I would say yes, because the whole point is those aren't, those aren't investors. Those are people who have been. Nantucket property owners for five years. They've been presumably part of our community for five years. J- Jim, I I appreciate you. You know, turning on that and I I guess I would have one technical note, which is that instead of purchase, it actually should be acquire. Uh, because not all property is purchased, but that's a technical note for John.
And is that acquired through inheritance and everything like that?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean. Like, if we're going to have the exception for um. Inheritance and interfamily gift and divorce, those are not typically purchases, they're acquisitions, you know.
And they would be bound by the same rule?
Yeah.
Matthew.
Yeah, um, I don't want to speak for charity, but I I I don't dislike the uh the five year. I I I like, you know, I think it's a good idea. I think Steven also told us his retirement plan there, but um. Uh, so it's, I I don't, I I think it could be okay because I I would agree with that. Um, but yeah, acquire or. You know, sometimes that worries me because I think maybe you have some kids out there. I think I it's happened over by my. In-laws place, you know, the parents unfortunately passed on and the kids licking their chops when they saw the market out here and just broke it up, sold it off and. And short term rent the main house and so that worries me. Uh, a little bit, um, you know, I don't, sometimes they don't have good intentions, but that's kind of a one off too, so. Um, other than that, you you know. I would be okay with that. I I don't want to speak for charity.
Grant.
So I just want to point out that the way this is written right now. The people that we are penalizing with the um three changes in occupancy for five years. Are people that buy or build a house or acquire or build a house after the effective date. Of this by law. So if someone's owned a house for five years. We um they they're not subject to this three for five year. Um, limitation, so I I hear what Steven is saying. I also hear what Jim is saying and I think that. Maybe there's a, maybe there's an elegant way to um to make. An accommodation for people who have lived on the island more than five years or five years or more and um. And suddenly need to short term rent.
So so um, Grant, I actually think we should cut. Uh, builds and a dwelling because I don't think, I think that rule should apply even if there are existing dwellings. Like, I don't, I I think that that builds a new one actually cuts against what we're trying to do here.
I agree.
I think it's just, it should be from the the purchase, right? If you shouldn't, if you buy a property and don't build, the rule still should apply.
Yes, but that's what it says.
Yeah, yeah.
Purchases a dwelling.
I would just go with acquisition and not. The construction of a new dwelling because I don't want to have a loophole for people who don't do construction.
How is somebody going to participate in the community if they don't build a dwelling?
The the presumably they're buying a property that hasn't.
No, but you're talking about construction.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I like, I don't, I don't understand why builds a new dwelling would matter because. The we care about whether or not they, how long they have they own the property and I don't think that if you, the lack of doing construction shouldn't be a loophole.
Okay, would anybody like to take a stab at summarizing any potential changes so John can make them, John and Erica potentially can mark them down? And where we are consensus. Yes, Jim.
You're muted, Jim.
I I have a proposed language.
Sorry. Go ahead, John.
Provided, however. That an owner who acquires a dwelling unit. After the effective date of this by law. May only engage in a short term vacation rental. With no more than three changes in occupancy in July and August. For the first five years of ownership. Of the dwelling unit.
And John, the only thing I was would add is that at the very top of that, it would say, instead of six to seven, it would say eight times.
Oh, yeah. No, no, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and John, just from a technical point of view, I think we're actually talking about acquisition of a lot. Um, or dwelling in it.
Why would, why would?
People purchase lots, they don't actually purchase dwelling units.
Well, why should they be able, if they don't, the whole logic around this was that you were going to make sure that somebody participates in the community.
Correct, yeah.
And so they own a lot for five years.
When I say lot, it doesn't, a lot doesn't have to be vacant. A lot is just the land you buy. But but it has, well, you don't buy the dwelling, you buy the land and it has. You know, improvements, which are the dwelling units. True. So just for, you know, we're basing it on the, you know, you, when you look at the deed. How we're going to determine when people acquire these lands, those deeds are for the are for the lot. Not for the dwelling unit.
Yes, but I still want to go back to the logic that you introduced, which is it's people participating in the community.
Yeah, well, if someone buys a property for five years. Presumably. And they and they can only have those turnovers, presumably they are then using it for some of that time. That's the whole, that's the goal. You can't force them to use it. But the goal is by limiting their changes in oc- in occupancy, that we are then. Both dissuading investors and encouraging users.
Okay, so are you saying that you want to change purchases a lot or because I think purchases a dwelling unit is very important to establish that?
I'm saying it should be acquires a lot or dwelling.
Acquires and I think it should be a dwelling unit to suggest that they they just don't come and buy and speculate and land and, you know.
Yeah, the a lot doesn't mean, lot doesn't mean land, but vacant land. Lot is a divine term in the zoning code.
I'll look that up right now.
Who acquires a dwelling unit or a lot?
Yeah.
After the effective date of this by law.
I think, I think or is fine.
And then at the end, we'll say for July and August for the first. Five years, right?
Yeah.
Of ownership of the dwelling unit or a lot.
So I have to say. I I want to congratulate all of us because I think this is a relatively simple and extremely effective tool. That we are potentially putting forward here to both limit nuisances in communities and limit investor bogus purchases. So if this works, it was a good idea. I mean, it was, it's a, it's a really strong tool.
Okay.
Well, we haven't, we're not done yet, Steven, so don't, don't.
Yeah. I said, yeah.
Please, yeah. All right, so I I think I have enough to write up number three. Um, what about number four?
Well, my question is, if you, what I just said before, um, these people are acquiring their lot. Their inheritance or whatever. Probably never lived there.
Well, four talks.
Wait, right?
You mean under three, Charity?
Oh, they'd be bound by number three.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that right?
Yes.
Now it says as long as the prior record owner engaged in a short term. Vacation rental. Of the same dwelling unit. For at least. Three years over what period? Or immediate prior three years.
Yeah. Again, I don't think that we should have to require that they engaged in short term rentals in order to qualify. For this provision and in fact, I don't think we want to encourage that they that they did it in order to qualify. The 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 point of this is that if you get the property through either inheritance, divorce or interfamily gift. Then you are, you presumably have already satisfied. The five years of ownership and and participation in the community. That we wanted to and you are obviously not an investor because investors don't acquire through inheritance, divorce and interfamily gift. Um, so so I I would, I would cut the the artificial requirements that you have to have already short term rented.
Jim.
But that's different than what you just said because if they're going to be that bound by one thirty nine thirty eight three. They're acquiring the property. What's, what's to change the requirements that it's three and five?
So the requirements don't change with this, with, you know, this language that I proposed is intended to allow. Certain people to piggyback on the five year ownership of another person. And that the three categories that I proposed are inheritance, divorce and interfamily gift. Because in those cases, that change of ownership is not necessarily something where we're. Where we should be penalizing the person who requires it, you know, if if. If there's, again, because that family has already had. That community involvement of at least five years and because in no circumstance is, doesn't, could that really be a an investor? Investors don't acquire through inheritance, divorce and interfamily gift.
I'm sorry, but they they acquire. Um, maybe through inheritance.
Yeah, well. This.
But I mean, inheritance, an interfamily gift. That's an investment. They give the, they give it to their children, uh. Uh.
I don't.
And you know, estate taxes.
That's, that's not, that's, that's not who I think we're talking about. If if parents want to give the property to their kids, that's not who we. That how I've understood us to be talking about as investors. Um, the reality is. Nantucket families, by and large, try to keep properties in the family, whether that's a summer family or a local family. And if we're telling people that people who have owned properties for decades or generations are going to start being treated like investors. That I think is going to get a real pushback at town meeting. I think that. People who have owned the property for five years should be able to benefit from that five year ownership of their parents, their divorced spouse or. You know, other inheritance.
Jim, Matthew and then Grant.
Thanks, um. I I agree that this makes sense. I think of. A number of seasonal families, but not just seasonal families, but who have held on to property over decades through generations. They uh. Many of them need to rent their and their property as an S T R for a portion of the summer. They bring great um. Great uh value, great riches in Nantucket in many ways, both in terms of their traditional love of the island, their love of culture, their love of of. The lifestyle here and the same with with year round families. Um, I think this is, this is a value that we want to support and I think. I think this, this makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Um. John.
Steven, I have a question.
Yeah.
In number four, in the last line, are we changing three years to five years?
Uh, yeah, I think it's a match.
Yeah, okay.
I, yeah, I would, I would cut the um. Requirement that they already. Um. Short term rents because I don't want to create an artificial incentive for them to do it, but I would have the five year term match.
You would have the five year term match.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks.
Matt.
Yeah, I was just looking for more of a definition of the interfamily gift. I didn't see one in the. Uh. Definitions of our towns. Uh, but I'm guessing it's, you know.
Steven, I, Steven, I'm sure you can do that off the top of your head.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically borrowed from the land bank. It's. Yeah, I mean, it's basically borrowed from the land bank. It's, you know, um, the land bank has a definition we could use. It's, it's direct uh, families, you know, direct, direct lineage family members. I also don't know a lot of people who are giving away Nantucket houses to, uh, random, uh, random people.
Yeah.
Grant? Grant, you're muted.
Yeah, I just realized that. Um, I, I, I am holding out hope that I will receive a Nantucket home as a gift, uh, but I don't think that's going to happen. Um, I, you know, I think this is a good provision to have in here because uh, inheritance, divorce, um, or a change of form of record ownership are all major things that happen in people's lives and having the ability to short-term rent, um, if it's always been a traditional use of that property, or it has been for three, for five years, um, makes a lot of sense, just because in those situations, especially in the case of inheritance or divorce, people need the extra cash. Um, I can think of a couple of families where the patriarch or the matriarch of the family passes away, leaves the house. Um, everyone, everyone who receives the house as an inheritance, they, they, the only way they can keep it and pay the upkeep on it is to short-term rent. So I've seen that a couple of times. So, um, I think this just makes sense.
Right. Uh, just while, while we're at 7:50 here, um, I don't think we necessarily have a hard, hard cutoff at 8:00 PM, but I also want to be mindful of everyone's time. And we're kind of getting there toward, towards the end of the bylaw. So, um, you know, let's be mindful that we have nine minutes on the clock, but if we go a couple over, that's okay too, as long as nobody has a hard out. Does that, does that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah.
Um, uh, I'm sorry, Tom, I don't have much more than about 20 minutes to a half hour.
Okay.
More.
I think we're close.
Yeah, so, um, I have enough on four. Um, I think the only real issue left is five.
Yeah.
And let me make a suggestion here before we deal with five. I'm gonna, Erica, I'm going to take back my promise to get this to you by noon tomorrow. Um, I think my goal is going to be to circulate it to the three groups and Tom and, and Malcolm tomorrow and give you guys the weekend. Do you tell me if this works, Erica? Give anybody can respond back, but not to change our mind about what we agree to. The review is going to be limited to, did I wordsmith it correctly?
Okay.
I'm not going to accept any new concepts or comments or gee, I changed my mind. That's going to have to be for a later date.
Okay.
And you know, once this goes on the warrant as the select board article, um, if people have a real serious problem with it, there's nothing to prevent us from going through what I call an Article 60 protocol like we did for the annual town meeting.
Yeah.
With that in mind, what are we going to do about five?
I'm fine with five. And six.
Grant?
Okay.
Um, I, you know, I'm fine with five. I think that, um, you know, the shoulder seasons are the time when the island is less busy and it's good to be able to do some activity during that time. It's, you know, it's not going to have a huge impact on the island. Um, and we do have the noise bylaw and the other disturbances bylaws that, that are in effect. So I think we're well covered for the shoulder season.
Charity? Oh, sorry.
Charity, you had your, you did, and then Jim, then Matt.
Okay, I am reluctant to agree to this. I think that in our original article, we wanted to have some protection in the shoulder season. Um, but I'm quite sure I'm going to be outvoted on it, but I want the record to show that I would like to see some kind of control over the um, shoulder season and changes of occupancy. That goes along with our original article, and I'm sticking to it.
Jim?
Um, I think this is a good provision and I'll remind us all that Malcolm pointed out that in the interest of simplicity, he, he suggested we keep it unlimited. I also think living on Backstreet in town, the churn, the noise is not that bad in the shoulder season, and I think it really benefits, uh, the island economy to spread it out over a longer period of time. So I, I definitely support this, and I really hope Charity that you'll, you'll come with us on this because I, I just think it, it makes sense for all of us.
Matthew?
Yeah, um, unfortunately, Jim, I, I have to disagree as well. I, I really like to see, I mean, you got to remember the whole reason we're doing this is for the neighbors and the neighborhoods. And, you know, it's, that's when a lot of the, we've heard from our, you know, the people in our group and the followers and constituents, and they, they, a lot of problems occur in those, you know, Memorial Labor Day weekends outside of July and August. Um, that's when the rates start going down. That's when younger crowds can afford to come here. That's when, you know, the big party crowds. I came home the other night. Um, you know, my son had a campout, cookout out at Camp Richard. We came home about nine o'clock and somewhere over Daffield Region, there you'd hear a DJ and a party till 11, 12 o'clock at night. I mean, that's, and so it's, that's where you see, I, in my opinion, you know, a, a lot of the, a lot of the more ruckus crowd comes to the island. You know, it's the wedding parties, things like that. And, and our entire mission here is, is to protect the neighborhoods and, and help a lot of these people out that have been struggling with this. Um, and struggling with the bad renters and, and things like that. And I know we're trying to put some provisions in place for that, but really, I think the biggest deterrent to this would be some sort of limits in the shoulder season or, or for the, I would really like to see an entire, an annual limit, but um, yeah, it's, that's where I'm at right now.
All right, Stephen, then Charity?
Uh, so, uh, I'm entirely sympathetic to the, um, interests that, that Matt and Charity are talking about protecting. But I think that in the shoulder season, um, what we need to keep in mind is that we're in bringing in $5,000 violations and the, the ability.
Somebody even want to tell, uh,
And the potential to lose a license.
We can see your email.
What?
Oh. Um, so, you know,
Confidential.
Limit, limiting, limiting changes in turnover are not the only tool in this. The $5,000 penalty and the ability to lose, uh, or not renew, uh, an STR license is a, is also a significant, uh, tool here. So I think we have to keep in mind that um, if there are people who are causing disturbances in their neighborhoods, um, that there's lots, there, there are other ways we can, we can, uh, address that. And I agree with you, the, the $300 ticket for a noise violation, if it even happens, is nothing. But the loss of a STR license or revocation or non-renewal and a $5,000 penalty, I, I think that'll get people's attention.
Charity? Then Grant?
I, you know, I could, I would be happy to uh, agree with that if anybody enforced anything. Um, and that is the issue all along, is this is a nice piece of paper. Um, but how confident can we be that anything is going to be enforced? That's, that's part of the problem that I have. And, um, going back to what we had originally considered is you put the burden on the property owner to screen that the people who are going to be coming into their dwellings, whether it's in July and August, or whether it's on the, in the shoulder season. And we've had, I think we had somebody in public comment that said, you know, we need to do a better job. Um, the owners need to do a better job in trying to enforce the behavior of their tenants. And that's one way of doing it. They can be selective about the people that they um, agree to, uh, contract their property to.
Grant?
I, I just quickly, based on the people I've talked to, based on the limited research that I've done, and I plan to do more market research to sort of prove out some of these concepts. But based on what I know right now, this may be a bridge too far for special town meeting voters. This could kill the whole thing if we make more limitations in the shoulders, because a lot of people rely on, on the, on the businesses in the shoulder season, especially the, the, you know, the hair and makeup people that do weddings and, and the, the caterers and, you know, all these ancillary businesses. So I, I really think we need to keep it simple. Don't, don't get, um, short, the, um, special town meeting voters hackles up and, and keep this the way it is.
Stephen?
Uh, yeah, I just, I, I, I agree with you, Charity, that enforcement is not great, and I agree with you that we need to give, put incentives for people to screen and, uh, supervise their tenants. And I think that limiting changes of occupancy in the shoulder season doesn't do that, but penalties and loss of licenses will. That's, that's what's going to get people's attention. And the great thing, and the great thing about it is there's, there will be a, um, you know, a complaint system in place. So if a property is getting multiple complaints, that person is going to not only get penalties, they're going to have trouble renewing their license. And I think that, that's, you hit them in the pocketbook is how you, is how you get their attention.
Don, if I could add to that, one of the things, um, everyone needs to keep in mind is that the town is going to be generating quite a bit of revenue from the fees for the certificates of registration, and that money has to be used for the, um, administration and enforcement of the bylaw. Uh, and so you might find a very different enforcement environment once the fees are collected and staff is hired by the Board of Health to go ahead and monitor compliance with these requirements.
And John, just for members of the public, per state law, the fees have to be commensurate with what the cost of the program, to run the program.
That's right. Generally speaking, that's correct.
Generally speaking, thank you. All right, everybody, 8:02. Um, so I'd just like to quickly go to the groups, Charity and Matthew, I, you, I know you might, um, end up wanting to do your own article, um, on town meeting floor, but I'd like to go to each group and just kind of, um, just a quick yes or no. And just make sure everyone is relatively happy, given our conversation on, on where we got tonight. So I would start with, um, Charity and Matthew, and then alphabetical order like we've been doing.
Okay, I was going to, uh, I want to ask a question about next week. Um, this is going to be discussed by the select board. Will we have an opportunity for public comment?
That's up to the chair, but I, you know, and I don't want to speak for, I don't want to speak for her, but I wouldn't be surprised. Um, but I, I would leave that to Brooke to decide.
Um, I would, I would go a bit further than that. That is the protocol that the select board follows with every single agenda, right?
Okay.
So anybody, it's, any member of the public is certainly going to be able to comment on this.
Oh, yeah, I guess certainly public, a public comment. Anyway, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the correction, John. Appreciate it.
I would like to say though, that it's not a public hearing and it is the board's, the chair's purview. So.
Yeah, but we're not going to change what the custom and practice has been, Erica.
Just select meeting.
Yeah, I don't think that would be a good idea to change the, the custom and practice, as I say.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I will, uh, with that in mind, I will reserve the comment, I, a statement I was going to read, and I will, I will do that next week. But I do want to say one thing. We cannot, and we will not, agree to a Y in the, uh, in the use chart um, for all zones, for what is now going to be called a Nantucket, what, vacation rental? Is that what it is?
Yes, Nantucket vacation rental.
And on the basis of that alone, while I, Matt and I have enjoyed sort of helping you work through this, uh, we are not going to be able to support anything that, um, puts a, anything but an A in that column.
Charity, my, my own, I, I accept your, that comment. My own hope as a Nantucketer is that that, that you and Matthew are pro your article and, and not so much negative against this compromise article. So I think the, the, the merits or demerits of these articles need to rise and, rise or fall on town meeting floor themselves. Um, so I would just, I would just hope to, to, my, my own hope as an Antucketer's, like word member, whatever hat I'm wearing, that we can all, um, you know, so just make the best case for our own, i- if, if you are going to do a standard, your own standalone article, make the best case for your article and have the chips fall where they may.
More or less it.
Got it. Okay. Uh, Matt, any, I'm sure you agree with your colleague?
Yeah, I do. Um, but I will have to say, you know, I think this has definitely been much, you know, I, I wish we had more time. I think we could have possibly worked a few more things out. Um, I would have really liked to seen a general bylaw go with this. Um, I know we've, you know, then five, six months later, we have another, um, town meeting to, to possibly, you know, work this stuff out in the wintertime as well, but, um, yeah, I, but I think that we kind of took a step in the right direction. I'm just glad that we could get together and work together somewhat and, and, you know, I, I think there is some good things in here that definitely can be worked on, but like I said, you know, we, we have a mission, and that mission is protect the neighborhoods, protect the year-rounders, um, and protect the community, and that's our number one mission. And I just want to reiterate that, and, and that's, that's all we're here for. You know, we're not here saying we don't want short-term rentals on the island. We don't want to be part of our community. We don't want it for our economy. That's not what we're saying at all. We just want to get back to, you know, kind of what Nantucket almost used to be, and not just a, a simple playground, you know, for lots of people to come. I, I mean, it is that, but it's, it's so much more. We have such a good community. And, and as a father with kids, I am deeply, deeply concerned with the direction that this community is headed, because the affordability of this island, I, I know what it was inevitable to come, but it wasn't such a fast pace. And, you know, what's going on in the schools and stuff like that. It, it's getting very, very concerning. And I'm not saying that limiting STRs is going to fix that by any means, but I think it, it's going to be a step in a, a, a very long road to the right direction. And so I, I, you know, I, I also hope that the select board can chew on this a little bit too, and, and maybe they, they'll see some compromise or something like that. And I don't know if that's your guys' plan at all, to talk about it and, and kind of take in everything that's been said here. And, and if you guys are going to put in any changes, are you just going to take this and run with it? Um, but yeah, that's, that's where we're at, and it's, you know, I, I didn't want to see us to go in with competing articles any more than anybody else here did. Um, and who knows, maybe that won't be the case, but it's, uh, I would really, yeah, just reiterate, our mission is to protect these neighborhoods and, and the year-round community on this island. So.
Thanks, Matt. Um, good on my colleague, Dr. McNabb.
He's muted.
Malcolm, we can't hear you. Huh?
Yeah.
Still muted.
Well, Malcolm, keep, keep trying and then, uh, so Stephen?
How's this?
You good? Good.
It's always a button. I just wanted to congratulate the six of you and, and John is, both Johns as well. Uh, you're all very articulate, and you all, you all did a great job in your debating. And I've kind of moved back and forth on various issues on this, and I, I think you, you're, you're getting close. I think this is close to something that actually may get approved. I just want to thank you all, and I will have, uh, the weekend until Wednesday to, uh, have some more thought about it. But congratulations to you all.
Stephen, Grant, and Jim, all all so on the same page, yes, for the article uh with pending John's edits and send thumbs up.
Yeah. Yes.
Tom?
Yeah, Jim.
I'd just like to to say, uh, yes, thank you to everyone. Um, I do want to point out, I do believe that this article is a really elegant compromise of all three positions. And of course, I would love it if Charity and and Matt stayed with us on this, but I just want to point out, Charity, we did really listen to you. I feel I certainly listened to you, and I really believe your ideas are incorporated in this uh in many ways, and I, uh, I want to make that clear going forward, that if the select board does accept this as we've written it, that it really does include ideas from all three groups, and I think that's a real strength.
Yeah. Uh, I I would agree. I think it's it's elegant, it's simple, uh, and it addresses all of the goals that we that we share. Um, it doesn't address all those in the way everybody wanted to, but I think it addresses them in a way that's both simple and 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 highly effective. And so I hope we'll we'll end up with uh some version of this adopted at town meeting so that we can move on from this issue and this certainty and no more lawsuits and, uh, you know, people just have a a system in place that that achieves the goals that we've been we've been talking about here tonight and at these meetings. Thanks.
Grant, very briefly, before we adjourn?
Yeah, I think I think we can provide a uh endorsement of this article as, you know, as long as it doesn't change a great deal at the select board and at the planning board and at the FinCom. Um, I think I think we can get behind it and um and be really good cheerleaders for it, because I think it's a reasonable compromise article that a lot of people can say yes to.
Thank you all for your participation. Twelve hours and eleven minutes. That's a really good job. Um, appreciate all your time and happy summer. And with that, I would take a I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.
And Tom, thank you to you. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice work, Tom.